Okay, good evening. I'm at 6:30. I'm going to call the order meeting number 1902. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are here live in the John Daly Meeting Room of the Town Hall, as well as on the Zoom platform. I'm going to begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag.
In the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we have a quorum. We have all five regular members, as well as our alternate. Do we have any added agenda?
No.
Legal notices? There were three legal notices. First one was the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda. They'll be made available on the town's website. PZ 2025-17, owner applicant is the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr. Kemet and Sons Construction is requesting a renewal extension of a special use permit. PZ 2024-09, for a soil management facility. No changes in operation is proposed, located at 297 North Road, map 117, block 36, lot 43B and 43C, zoned in A1. Full copy of this application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting, provide verbal and written comment regarding this application. And this was posted in the Journal Inquirer on August 15, and again on August 22, 2025. Next legal notice. East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. PZ 2025-18, applicant owner is Morello Airbnb. Shaileen Homeroi, Roger Morello, Morello Properties LLC, is requesting a special use permit to use existing unit number three located at 95 Main Street as a short-term rental with no changes to the structure or exterior of the building. The unit will be rented under 30 days with off-street parking provided. Map is located on map 98, block 44, lot 45, and zone is a B2. Full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. And this was posted in the Journal Inquirer on August 15, and again on August 22, 2025. The third legal notice is the East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 26, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. PZ 2025-20, the owner applicant is Marcia Hughes Health Services LLC, Dr. Marcia Hughes, Ph.D. LCSW is requesting a special use permit for a mental health and fitness service home occupation located at 260 Scantic Road, map 23, block 22, lot 37, and zone is A1. A full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. And this was posted in the Journal Inquirer on August 15, and then on August 22, 2025. We're at the public participation portion of our agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Anderson, first.
Okay. All right, many useful signs. So, uh... I noticed that sign discussions are done at this point, not on the agenda at least. So, Route 5, 140, those are business districts. And that's all they are. The red roots there are points of dental. Businesses need to be able to promote their business to survive. So, I think any kind of sign, pretty much should be allowed. Concept of blinking signs or electronics. Pointless to say no, because you have two of them on those roads, and they don't cause any distraction at all. They never cause the problem. That means others won't either. So it gets to be a nonsense piece of regulation, in my opinion. So that should be changed. The open flags that wave, they don't hurt anybody. They're not a distraction. They're not any kind of issue in any way, shape, or form. That is to attract attention, so people will go to the business. The idea of only allowing eight-way signs, nonsense. It's inadequate for business, business and business. You need all the customers you can get. You need a lot of cash flow. The only way you're going to get it, by average, I think. So that's my statement, and you'll probably hear it again sometime. Thank you.
Patricia Sherry, Depot Street, Broadbrook. At the last meeting that you had, I tried to get on the Zoom, because I wasn't here. And I had a problem. I couldn't get connected at all. I know it says it's a two-part thing. But how do you do that? I've gone to other Zoom meetings, but this one I could not get in.
The, um, can I answer?
Yeah.
The two-part process, with the link on there, you click that?
Yes.
And it comes up with a screen that says meeting ID and password? And so the agenda gives you the meeting ID number to type in?
Yeah.
And the password?
Yeah. Put the yes up.
Not sure why that would happen. I'll just can...
Well, there was nobody on it last time.
I don't know what...
We did have people on Zoom from the last meeting. You went to the most current, most current agenda, maybe clicked on an old link or something? I mean, we did start the meeting a little later, as far as getting online. So if you went, if you went a little earlier, we didn't get the Zoom link up until, I think, five minutes before the meeting started. Mike had to manipulate something on it.
Yep.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay. Move on to approval of minutes. Minutes from our previous meeting. The agenda says August 26 to August 12.
Made it safe, August 12.
Yes, yes. Okay.
Oh, the agenda.
Yeah, it's on here.
It says August 36 on the agenda, but I'm not...
It's the right one on the minutes.
From August 12, yes.
Thank you.
Gotcha. All right. Does anyone have any edits, corrections, or comments?
No, sir.
I did not?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
I was, yep. That's all about me, too. So line 24, Stacy has an E in it. And line 25, I was in person last meeting, not participated via Zoom.
Hmm?
Like that.
Is that the only place mentioned there, 24, 25?
That's the only part that was there, Zoom, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Stacy?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Nobody has anything else? Okay.
Just a general comment. With the corrections that are made, I think they should be in more detail, future minutes. They shouldn't be generalized, since we're going line and, and providing detail. But on line 57, one of, then, Govan is twice in the, in both. And one of those needs to be...
Myself.
And the same thing happened on the line 197. And then I guess the only other thing I'd say is on line 222, there's, um... It says, starting on 21, it says, "The town planner Calabrese revisited a prior conversation she had with the town attorney regarding regulations." That should be the commission.
Yeah.
We are. That's it. I have it.
Anyone has any other edits? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of our August 12 meeting, meeting 1901, with the corrections noted in lines 24, 25, 57, 197, and 222.
There's a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Receipt of applications. We have three to receive this week, in this meeting. First one is PZ 2025-22. The owner applicant is Victoria Kenia, is requesting a special use permit to use a single-family home located at 12 Depot Street for a short-term rental, off-street parking provided, located on map 98, block 45, lot 3, and zone is a B1. We have PZ 25-23. Owner applicant is James Guarano, is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at 40 Barbara Hill Road, map 19, block, lot 13 through 40, and the zone is an A1. And PZ 2025-24. The owner applicant is Mark and Laura Ackerman, is requesting a re-subdivision, one rear lot located at 50 Barbara Hill Road, map 19, block 68, lot 13-4, and the zone is an A1. These applications will be heard at a future meeting. Performance, bonds, actions, permit extension, road acceptances, we have none. Continued public hearings, we have none. So we're going to new public hearings. First one is PZ 2025-17. Owner applicant is the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr. Kemet and Sons Construction is requesting a renewal extension with special use permit, PZ 2024-09, for a soil management facility. No changes in operation is proposed at 297 North Road, map 117, block 36, lot 43B and 43C, zoned A1. Who's here to speak on behalf of this application?
Good evening. J.R. Sreeja Russo and Associates. They're representing the applicant. What do you see that? Okay. Here to you, okay. That's great. So I guess we're good. Again, J.R. Sreeja Russo, they're representing the applicant, the Kemet Family Limited Partnership, and Skip Kemet, Jr. Construction also here. Skip is here. And Steve and Tim from TND Recycling are also here. If there's any specific questions about the operation, they can answer those. So, this is an application for a soil management facility at 297 North Road. You saw it about a year ago. We were here, maybe, actually, I think it started more years ago. It's probably a year and a half of years ago. It came in as a renewal event or something that had been approved. Some years prior, there were modifications and quite a bit of work done on the plan, which was approved by you, I think, in July or August of last year. So we're back here again before you as the conditions required a renewal on an annual basis. And we have submitted an ASB, which you have in front of you, showing you what the current condition of the site is. And essentially, right now, all the work is taking place in Phase 1, which I highlighted over here on the plan. This is the limit of the phase. It's in pink here. The phase itself is just over five and a half acres. And quality activity right now is taking place within that area. Some deposition of material and construction of the limitation basin, which is under construction as we speak. Some of the other requirements in your approval from last year were a gate, which is in place with dislocation out here, an anti-tracking pad, which has been put in. And Skip has also added about 400 feet of patuminous millings beyond the anti-tracking pad into the site, which is also in place. So as trucks come in, they come in this way, they come down the side road, and back here to the area within Phase 1. So Ruth has put together a memo for you, I think, basically, talking a little bit about the facility. I don't believe there's been complaints of any nature that were brought to the Town Hall since last year. A landlord has taken, I don't think he had any comments. I believe the fire marshal looked at the plan and gave comments. There is one change, I think, that Ruth has, has added to this in terms of the conditions, with one that would not require a public hearing each time we have a renewal. So it would be a simple, come in before the commission in an application for renewal, assuming there's no major changes to the plan and no complaints, that a public hearing may not be necessary. So, as I say, the facility's been operating. I'm not sure that a whole lot of material has come in since the last year we were here, but some has. And as I said, the basin is under construction. So, and road, it's all on, and so is a, a tracking pad is in, gate is in. And the extension of the patuminous millings of about 400 feet beyond the tracking pad is also in. I don't know, I've been over there numerous times over the last year, and things are progressing and, and getting to the point where we'll have full completion of the basin, probably within the next few months, I would imagine, as the material comes in. If anybody has any questions, I could answer them for you, or Skip could answer them, or Steve, or Tim. But it's fairly straightforward, and I know you're all pretty familiar with it, since it wasn't that long ago we were here.
Tim, you have any questions?
No.
Nothing?
All right.
No, no, sir.
No calls.
Okay.
First line for that.
Do you have any questions of the applicant at all?
No.
I, uh, I'm just, I have a question on, on this item 20, as far as, not requiring a public hearing for any future renewals.
Well, that fits in with the option the commission may.
Okay. Would it require just coming for a special use permit renewal? Or it would be done administratively through the office?
It could be before the commission for a renewal. Or it could be a zoning, like an administrative approval. But I was thinking it would come before the commission. And as it gets submitted, the determination as to whether or not the commission reels a hearing is warranted, is really how that's written.
Okay. So would we, I'm just trying to collate this through in my head. Would we be able to actually receive the application and discuss it and make a determination if we wanted to speak to the applicant or not? Or how would all that come about?
Do it by letter. Have the applicant send in a letter. You have to send in an ASB.
And then we could discuss it as an added, as an agenda item, and then make a determination as to, are we satisfied with it?
Determination, yeah.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Mr. Anderson?
Well, I'm interested in Main Street, Broadbrook. I go by there multiple times a day, except for an occasional truck. Nobody even knows it's happening. So, uh, in my mind, it's much better than originally presented so far. So I think this should be good.
Anyone else? Anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's very, like I say, it's been about not even a year ago that we went through all of this. And it's good to see that we're making some progress in developing what you, what you're envisioning. Nobody has anything else? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ 2025-17. The owner applicant is Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr., Kemet and Sons Construction, for a renewal and extension of a special use permit.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The hearing is closed. Do you need any clarification or additional verbiage in this item 20 then? Because basically, as we discussed, or it'll be submitted by letter and then determined by the commission? Is that... Can put something to the effect of, uh...
The applicant.
Application may be submitted in writing, and at the discretion of the commission, we'll have a hearing or not, something to...
We have it, one year from the date.
No?
And then after that, insert, uh... Applicant shall review, I'm sorry, request a review. By commission.
Put it in writing? To request a review by the commission in writing?
In writing. In writing, to make a determination if a public hearing is required. Or recall. There isn't even, leave the rest, that way you know what you're considering.
Okay, we got that clarified. Anyone have anything else that they... I'll entertain a motion for this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ 2025-17 of Kemet Construction, Kemet and Sons Construction, Broadbrook, Connecticut, owned by the Kemet Family Limited Partnership and Stanley Kemet Jr. to renew the special permit granted on July 23, 2024, PZ 2024-9, for a soil management facility regarding and filling at Construction Yard property located at 297 North Road, zoned A1 and A2, accessors map 117, block 36, lots 43B and 43C. All plans and documents associated with the July 23, 24 approval of PZ 2025-9 are incorporated into this approval. And as part of the approval, there are 20 conditions noted in the memo to the commission from Ruth Ann Calabrese, dated 8/4/2025. However, condition 20 is going to be edited from that memo after the yellow text that ends with the word zoning regulations. Insert a sentence that says, "Applicant shall request a review by the commission in writing to make a determination if a public hearing is required for renewal." And then continue on with, "An ASB of the entire site, prepared by a licensed land surveyor or engineer, will be required before an extension can be granted. Failure to renew a permit shall be cause for revocation."
I ask you just to correct one item. The text in yellow, that should be PZ 2024-09. On the first page, at the bottom, with the associated documents. It should be 2024.
Okay. I agree that correction should be incorporated.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Dave. Any further discussion?
That was the end.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anonymous, you have your approval. Next public hearing is PZ 2025-18. Owner applicant is Morello Airbnb. Shaileen Homeroi, Roger Morello, Morello Properties LLC, is requesting a special use permit to use existing unit number three located at 95 Main Street as a short-term rental with no changes to the structure or exterior of the building. The unit will be rented under 30 days with off-street parking provided. It's located on a map 98, block 44, lot 45, and B2 zone. Be sure to speak on behalf of this application.
Hello, I'm on Zoom. I can't seem to get my video on, but can you guys hear me?
We hear you well, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Um, yeah, so we've been running an Airbnb in this unit for about two years, obviously without knowing that it wasn't in the regulations. So we've been working with Katrina and Danielle the last couple of months to get it within the regulations. And now we're just following all the right steps to hopefully get approved and continue operations. We haven't had any complaints to the town in the two years we've been operating. We've had pretty positive feedback from local business owners and guests that do come to Broadbrook. But if, I guess, anyone has any questions, I can answer. Yeah.
We'll start on the end. Stacy, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions for her. I think she did a great job presenting.
No, sir, I'm good. And?
I'm good, thank you.
Wayne?
Only two spark, or, excuse me, there's only two parking spots there.
Yep, so we only allow two guests to stay in the unit at one time. And that's noted when they book, that they're only allowed to park right in front of the unit. More often than not, there's only one car there at a time.
Yeah, I mean, I think we asked you a lot of questions when the text amendment came in.
Yes.
So we're pretty familiar with your operation and what you want to do. So I have no further questions. Staff have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to just comment on this application?
Eighty-nine Main Street. I live less than three hundred feet from this property. And never noticed for the time they were operating that they were even operating. There has been no issue at any time.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Okay, so nobody has any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. The owner applicant is Morello Airbnb. And it's a request for Unit Three at ninety-five Main Street to be used as a short-term rental.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. And I think we kind of hammered out all the terms and conditions when we were doing the text amendment change. So I think everything that we discussed is in this motion. No one has anything else? So entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ twenty twenty-five dash eighteen for a special use permit to use existing Unit Three located at ninety-five Main Street as a short-term rental with no changes to the structure or exterior of the building. The unit will be rented for under thirty days with off-street parking provided. The applicant owner is Morello Airbnb, Jalen Pomeroy, and Marjorie Roger Morello, Morello Properties LLC. The property located at ninety-five Main Street, Broadbrook, Map ninety-eight, Block forty-four, Lot forty-five is Zone B-two. And the approval is with three conditions noted in the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five memo to the commission from Danielle Boudreau, the zoning enforcement official.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Goodbye, Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anonymous, you have your approval. I think she dropped off. Our next public hearing is PZ twenty twenty-five dash twenty. The owner applicant is Dr. Marcia Hughes. Marcia Hughes Health Services is requesting a special use permit for a group therapy with fitness component, home occupation, located at two sixty Scantic Road, Map twenty-three, Block twenty-two, Lot thirty-seven, and the zone is an A-one. We're sure to speak on behalf of this application.
Good evening. For the record, JR, three JR Russo and Associates, here representing the applicant, Dr. Hughes is here, while one of her neighbors, Lee, are also here. So this is a property that's down on Scantic Road. It's two sixty Scantic, which is beyond Woolham, the town garage, the intersection with Stoughton, and just a little bit further down on the right. And if anybody knows where Ralph Wind lives, I think a lot of people might kind of diagonally across the street, I think, but Ralph's driveway is before you get to Happy Grove. So this is a property that Russia has lived in for probably the last fifteen or eighteen years. And there's a garage space that's located here to the rear of the property. It's about two hundred and forty feet from Scantic Road down here to the closest point of the garage. It's in the back. And what she's done is she's renovated some of this garage space, about thirty-six feet. It's a twenty-four-foot-deep garage, a typical two-car garage. She's renovated some of that space to be used as a studio for her business. And I've actually got some pictures here of it that were taken. And some of these are interior to this, this is one shot of the front of it that shows some double, like, patio doors that were overhead roll-up doors for bay doors into the garage that were replaced and the interior of the space has been renovated. It's got, obviously, the AC. I think it's got a split. And we are going to be installing a leach field and a septic system, which was just approved by North Central District Health, which I think you probably have a copy of. If I don't, I've got one here. So the main house is located up here where Marcia lives. This is the driveway. There's a gravel drive that comes down the back to this area, down to the garage space. And we're going to be adding some additional gravel to provide some parking spaces here. I think we've got six spaces in total, if I'm not mistaken, that would be located in this area that would be used when there's a group session taking place. And there could be, you know, five or six or maybe eight people inside the building. There'd be space to park in this area. And I will say that I did omit something that I intended to put on here and isn't on there, which would have been probably three to four arborvitaries along this side between there and the road. So if there were some cars parked there and somebody drove by, you're not going to see them, although it is a long ways off the road. But, you know, three or four arborvitaries isn't a whole lot of money to put in, and it would screen that parking area. And this, actually, this section of the building, so it wouldn't be visible from the road. So this is something that Marcia hears she's been doing. She's been doing telehealth services out of her home and single appointments out of her home. And now she's gotten to the point where she would like to be able to expand that a little bit. So she renovated this space. It's been, obviously, the construction work been reviewed by the building department. I think she has a certificate of occupancy for the building at this point. We got a report on her existing leach field, which wasn't the best. It needed some upgrades. So we got the health department involved and did some soil testing. And we've designed a new leach field to accommodate a bathroom facility. It'll be located in the right rear corner of the building, and that's going to be built in this space over here. And we did just recently receive an approval letter from the health department for that construction. So this falls under the home occupation section of your regulation. And Ruth has put together a pretty good memo here, kind of describing it to you based on the definition of home occupation and some of the other things that are allowed within a home occupation and by special use permit in residential zones, daycare centers, bed and breakfast, which, there are some daycare centers, obviously, already in town. And I'm not sure if there are any bed and breakfasts. I honestly don't know. But there have been other home uses in terms of attorney's offices, dental offices, Doc Mallens is the one that comes to my room on the corner of Phelps and Route Five, which was his home and his dentist's office. There was a doctor's office right up here in the, yeah. On Rice Street, just past the intersection of Old Ellington on the right. Scavato, maybe, was his name, I think, Dr. Scavato. If I remember correctly, I don't know. I'm not a East Windsor guy. I didn't grow up here, but I kind of remember. He had his home there, and he had his doctor's office there. There was another one down on Route Five, right around the corner from South Water Street. And that was a house that actually came up for sale about fifteen years ago. And we looked at it to move our office there, because he had his doctor's office on one side, his home was on the other side. Wasn't big enough for us, so we ended up buying it. But there was one there. There's the Work and Play School that's on Phelps Road, which I think started right up in Scantic by the church, if I'm not mistaken. I can't remember the gal's name. I've forgotten. I should remember it. She then moved down to Phelps and I think ran it out of her house for a while there. And then I think she built another building. I think there's two buildings on that particular property. There's a home, and there's the daycare facility, the children's daycare, I think, that's out in the front. And she's still there. And I think her daughter may be involved with her now in running that facility. So this would be a facility that would accommodate, as I said, up to maybe six, seven, eight people. I think in Ruth's memo, she put a restriction of no more than ten at any given time. I don't think Dr. Hughes, at this time, if she got ten people there once a week, would probably be very happy, but I'm not sure.
Memo says eight.
Says eight, okay. All right, that works. I couldn't remember. I thought it was ten, but that's all right. Eight is, I think, eight is okay. So Dr. Hughes is here. If anybody has any specific questions? Anybody has any other questions with regard to the layout, the septic? I'd be happy to answer those. Have any questions?
Wayne, you have anything?
No.
The health department approval. And the septic, what they've approved is drawn on the plan, so this is consistent with what they?
Yes, it is.
And for the thing, but one picture you found when you looked out the doors from the new space, you could see a house. Is that her house or?
That's her.
No, that's her. That's right here.
Is the neighbor's house to the fitness studio?
Over here.
On the north side.
Look up closer to your house. Three hundred feet, two hundred feet?
Driveway's four hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, his house is way back off.
Okay.
Well, it might be that corner.
Yeah, it might be a little bit over halfway down there.
So. Two hundred feet away.
Nice weather when you're doing the exercise class or fitness class. Are the doors closed or open? And the reason I'm asking is for booming leaves or kind of?
Open doors or closed?
You know, nice weather. Okay, so it's, it's the, it, there will be only sound. Yeah, no, it's just, I think I have one little. Oh, it's more, if you were to characterize the fitness, is it more like yoga and that kind, or is it like a loud fitness center? That's what I'm trying to get at.
The exercise program is inspired by dance, yoga, tai chi.
Okay, it's.
Physical therapy.
Okay, it's not. That's what I was asking, because I have a friend in Summers who has a exercise that someone is doing in a shed, probably illegally, abutting her, and it's loud, 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 bodybuilding kind of. Just concern for the neighbor. Yeah, okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you. Helpful.
Eddie, in?
That's it.
Dave, you have anything?
No, sir, not yet. No.
If I'm on those lines, what are your hours of operation? For the week?
Morning, mostly, maybe seven days.
Submit times?
Morning, you know, I'm just getting started.
Right.
Right, so probably, you know, I guess, seven AM, nine AM type thing, right?
Seven, nine.
Yeah.
And then after hours after their work schedule, something until like seven PM?
Exactly.
Did Stacy? I had it written down also, the hours of operation. So you will be, in the winter months, I guess, it's going to be past dark. Is there any additional illumination outside or anything like that? It's all lit up? Because I didn't see any on the observations of the?
I think there's lights on the building, if you look at the front.
See, small wall sconces, but I was thinking of the parking area.
Driveway down.
Yeah.
Oh, but there could be, actually, there could be lights added on the gavel end facing the street that could illuminate the parking area. That would be simple enough to do.
At what point is it going to trigger needing for photometric or anything like that? Not at this level?
There is also a pole where the service comes in from the street here, and there's a pole midway here that we could add a light there to illuminate the driveway.
Does the home occupation require you to have any, there are special parking?
Yeah, you don't.
Be compliant residential.
Okay, so you don't need to have an ADA and handicap spot and all that other stuff. And I guess we to add an item six for the updating of landscaping plan, I guess, for your as-bills?
Can add the landscape and submit a plan for landing ops. Add the arborvitaries along the edge of the parking area.
Yeah, item, you want to do is item number six.
Oh, yeah, under other conditions.
Yeah, we'll just put item number six as a updated landscaping plan. We'll be on the final as-bills or something.
Well, then it's not.
Then it's not a review, yeah.
I would like to put it up as C.
C.
One C.
Okay.
Plan will be revised. Include three arborvitaries. Plan will be revised to include three arborvitaries along the parking area.
Another question. When it says there shall be no more than three sessions per day, is that, I'll say, the fitness? Or is that the counselor?
I was, when I suggested it, I was suggesting the fitness portion. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, because I don't think it would be fair to limit the number of patients you can talk to.
Thinking about was traffic coming in and out of exercise classes. How many times a day would you shift them around?
Do we want to, do we want to add the word fitness in there or?
Three fitness sessions per day?
Doesn't matter what you're writing. The way he's going to check anyways.
I know. Because we're going to be.
Honest with you.
Get to the meaning of it. It would have been.
We watch it. I'll take care of it.
Free. I would suggest group fitness sessions.
I know all of you didn't see the draft motions. They weren't in the packet. So I passed this down. Everybody can take a look at the draft motions. Okay. While we're doing that, I'll open it up. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this application?
I'm not talking to individual therapy classes.
Correct.
Correct.
The way I am, well, I guess, I can answer. I have drafted this that there shall be no more than three group fitness sessions per day.
Group.
Makes sense. Yep.
Okay, if nobody in the audience would like to speak, okay, Mr. Anderson?
Welcome, Anderson, eighty-nine Main. I think it's a simple concept, another build, more taxes, go.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Is there anyone online that'd like to speak on this application? Anybody else have anything else they thought of? No?
No, sir.
Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application PZ 2025-20. The applicant owner is Marcia Hughes Health Services LLC, Dr. Marcia Hughes, PhD, LCSW, for a request for a special use permit for a mental health and fitness services home occupation at 260 Scantic Road.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, is no no further comments from anyone? And I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve application PZ 2025-20 for a special use permit for a home occupation for mental health, for a mental health and fitness services to include the existing accessory building as an office and exercise studio. The applicant owner is Marcia Hughes Health Services LLC, property located at 260 Scantic Road, East Windsor, MAP 23, block 22, lot 37. It's Zoned A1. The approval incorporates the reference plans entitled Marcia Hughes Health Services LLC Special Permit, 260 Scantic Road, East Windsor, Connecticut, MAP 23, block 22, lot 37. A1 Sheets 1 through 4, prepared by JR Russo and Associates, last revised 7/29/2025. The approval has the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a zoning permit, the owner applicant must provide the planning department with, A, proof of business registration has been filed with the town clerk's office. B, a copy of this approval shall be filed on the land records. And C, the plan will be revised to include the three arborvitae. General conditions are number two, there shall be no more than eight participants in the group exercise sessions. Three, there shall be no more than three group fitness sessions per day. Number four, there shall be no sessions held past 8:00 PM. And five, this special use permit will terminate upon sale or transfer of the property.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 You have your approval.
Thank you.
No old business. We have no new business. Other business, we have our CEO report. Yeah.
Yellow, pink, blue, Mebury Village. The citation was paid. That's now closed. Second, 1:30. Post, we're awaiting the payment of the citation, so that's going down another line.
They've complied.
Hearing officer.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they complied, but they still have the fine to pay. 140 South Rexado, still past due for the citation.
It's pending with DMV. Is that?
He got his, he, when she found it, it was, he didn't have his DMV license, but he's got it now.
Okay.
But the fine.
It's still.
Okay, 24 Holcomb, this was the livestock issue. An assessment's issued, so the the fine's going to start to accrue on a per day basis. That's what that. I mean, hearing officer. 122 South Main. This is.
Piles of millings. All the piles of millings.
Yes, the millings. Yes, Jay's working on a site plan for him to come in. Come in with, let's say, 115 North Road. This is a storage place.
Okay, so let me ask who that was.
Every time they change names.
They get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, somebody else could talk to about it.
So from correspondence, we have Robinson and Cole submission of technical information concerning a proposal to construct a wireless telecommunications facility at 59 Broadbrook Road, East Windsor.
So this is up on Holden's property. Yeah, it is a telecommunications tower, 150 foot high tower.
For PD, right?
I think it works with whatever they're doing.
I think it's R with PD.
Yeah, it talks about improving. Average 140.
Oh, Newt, yes, no.
Not 40. Summers, they went over here.
Totally.
My beer.
Double A Jakers. Oh, the other truck lot.
Give us.
Okay, oh, there we go.
Well, double A Jakers.
So they have some maps that show you, and you know, you're not going to, there'll be a certain segment, and we'll see this up at the tree line. And now see it year round, whether it's like.
Make them brown like in Germany. Green tree.
Mission does not jurisdiction.
I know we don't.
Request of informational session if you like one. The building official will have their statement.
Yeah.
He'll make sure all the proper setbacks and all that other stuff for placement.
Yeah, Danielle will read them. It's our place. Selection.
It's like, hey, we're putting this in if you like it or not, but here's the information. By the way, hey, what's going in?
No, they did. So who else they asked?
Yeah.
They got two non non responses and one, I'm not interested in makeup, so.
Okay, any idea timeframe wise? I mean, they still got a lot of permitting.
They still have to go through the process. This is like their intention to file. They are in the process. That takes a while.
Got you. We're talking probably sometime next year. So we have nothing for a business meeting, no need for an executive session. Anybody have anything that they'd like to bring in front of the commission? Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:29.